The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Spectrum.
All right, I'd like to call this special board meeting to order. We'll begin with roll call if you could help us with that Beth?
Becker.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
Banden Hoover.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Sitna Cow.
There.
All right, all seven board members are present. We're also joined by Superintendent Merly and members of his cabinet. The one agenda item tonight is to talk about our GBAFS forward and our, the purpose is to discuss gating criteria, which would allow us to transition between different modes of education, meaning all virtual hybrid model or an onsite model. I want to just clarify for those people watching at home, we are not voting tonight to transition between those models. The intention of tonight's meeting is a proactive step so that we can set gating criteria around what the spread of COVID-19 looks like in our community and when numbers and data would suggest that it would be a safe time to transition. When we passed a motion on August 3rd, we did adopt gating criteria at the time, which was a 5% positive test metric. And if we don't take any action, that piece of gating criteria still stands. And for everyone's information, right now in our community based upon the last report was that that metric was at 30%. So far cry from where we were hoping to be before we would transition. And absent any action, that metric would still stand in place. We do believe that we have access to better data and we believe that we could set gating criteria that is more robust and takes more things into account rather than that one metric. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to talk about what that could potentially look like. Again, hoping that the numbers in our community go down and that it's safe for us to go back to at least a hybrid model of instruction. So with that being said, going back to the August, it might have been the 31st, a motion was made by Andrew Becker to adopt a model and that motion was tabled. We were able to gather some feedback on that. We did spend quite a bit of time discussing that at that meeting. And so to start, I guess I would suggest that if there are any final questions on that first motion, the one that is currently on the table, we would take those first and then would look for someone to make that motion and take a vote on that motion first. If that passes, that would be the end of our meeting. And if it doesn't pass, we would take a look at the other motions that are on the table before us. So with that being said, are there any final questions or clarifications on Andrew's model that he put forward? Go ahead Rhonda.
My first, I don't know, question or comment, can we revisit why we would not be using the 5%? We still hear from people that talk about the 5%. There was discussion about the 5%, how you're really hamstrung to the testing capacity and sometimes it's really not indication of transmission and burden, it's more on the testing capacity. I think that would be an important point to discuss and to clarify.
Yeah, that's a great question Rhonda, and I could stumble my way through it, but Steve, I might defer to you as to sort of why we are going away from the first motion that we made.
So I think that we'll talk a little bit more about the Brown County dashboard, which does include positivity as one of its metrics. And I think that it is appropriate to use as a single metric. I know that if you watch the national news, you know that they speak about it repeatedly because it's the metrics that's used in the state of New York and with New York City Public Schools. And they've been in the news quite a bit lately. The issue that we have with it is depending on the availability of tests, there is a presumption that if the availability of tests is low, that those tests may be reserved for people who are more actively displaying symptoms. And so the positivity rate could in fact be artificially inflated versus the population as a whole. And so while it serves as one indicator, it's really an indicator of those tested and can indicate that there are not enough tests being done. And so I think it's an important metric for us to consider, but as a standalone metric, that's one of the things that I think a couple of meetings ago, we were talking about it. There was just general concern about using that as a solo metric.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions or is there anyone who's interested in making the motion that was originally made and on the table? Oh, go ahead Brenda.
Just so, can we put current data that matches the gating criteria that Andrew put in his motion? So in other words, just to give us an indication of where we are related to his 100 per 100,000 population per week.
So are you asking what it would look like?
I'm just saying, I think, I don't have it in front of me, but is the current load about 300?
So the current, the burden rate measured one day, 7 day, 14 day. The current burden rate per 100,000 at a seven day rolling average as of yesterday was 382. 14 day rolling average is 630. And Andrew's model was set to do a one week look back. So it would be this Sunday to last Sunday. The seven day average, the seven day rolling average this Sunday was 382. The seven day rolling average last Sunday was 248.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear as to what numbers we were talking about. Thanks.
Go ahead Rhonda.
Could we, I guess, reiterate and just discuss and make sure that anyone that's maybe new didn't follow last meeting or so, where the motion or where the proposal went, why it went where it did? What happened ultimately at that point within, you know, with Brown County Health, Public Health? Where, if they said anything, have any input on it? And if not, why not? Just to have some sort of history of that would be great.
That's a good point and a good segue for us as we, as we look at perhaps what's next for us. So one of the questions that was asked was whether or not we could share those, those models with Brown County Public Health. I did have the opportunity to have that conversation with their health team and share those models with them. They responded that they were actually in progress with developing a new dashboard. Their dashboard has five metrics on it. They look at the seven day rolling average burden rate, which would be that metric that Andrew has in his model. They also look at a 14 day rolling average of the percent positive in the county. And that would be similar to the current metric that we have in place that was adopted in early August. They also look at the number of confirmed cases in two populations. One is the general population and the other is in children ages 5 to 18. That, keep in mind that that general population number of positive tests is also the number that's used in calculating the burden rate. So you could look at it and see that there's some similarity to those two numbers as statistical measures. That age 5 to 18 is new for us. We did not have access to that through DHS. Brown County Public Health is actually culling that data from their data. And so that's a new measure for us and looks at specifically at students that are in our demographic attendance profile. And then their fifth category is the number of hospitalizations in the last 14 days. So perhaps less relevant to us, very relevant obviously to the healthcare system as they look at their ability to be prepared for any potential uptick in virus spread and the need to hospitalized patients for it, but perhaps not as relevant to us in school. So those are the five metrics that the county has come up with. In our initial dialogue with them, they had talked about developing gating criteria. They have not done so, but I do think that it provides a significant opportunity for us to use a local data source, which our folks at Brown County Public Health are scrubbing. So when they look at data that comes from the state, they're able to geocode it and make sure that it is actually indeed Brown County residents. And so they're spending quite a bit of time cleaning that data up. So I think it has a high integrity value for us to use as a data source.
So if I, if I could just jump in to provide a little bit more of the history, I think Steve covered that really well. But when we met on the 31st, we talked about a model that came from DHS and looked at that pretty closely. Andrew proposed another model that was very intriguing to everyone. And I think that the decision was made to table that because we were hoping for someone to weigh in on that model. And so then that was tabled. And since then, we've gotten some more feedback from Brown County Public Health with some more local data sources, which is, I think, what the board was asking for when we delayed the conversation the last two times.
Eric.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, so it's been stated multiple times that Green Bay School District Board members were not medical experts. Do we consider Brown County Public Health medical experts?
I'd say they're public health experts, yes.
So, and I asked this prior to the meeting, the last meeting, and I asked, or prior to this meeting and mentioned it at last meeting. Is there a reason why there's never been anyone from Brown County Public Health that is willing to come and present any, any data to a very large public school district in their county? And they would be simultaneously presenting it to the public as well. I think it's important because it is a fair criticism for us to sit here and try to disseminate numbers and make decisions like this when we, when we have a county health department with personnel who have never come and been in one of our meetings. I think it's, it would be the utmost importance for the public to hear from them rather than, we're, you know, we're third person. We're doing the third person thing all the time, right?
Rhonda, I can speak to that a little bit. I reached out to someone from Brown County Public Health and they're, they're still working through it. So one of their, I think, trepidations is to come to a public school board meeting and have us ask questions that they don't necessarily have the answers to yet because they're working through it individually. Steve, I know you've had conversations. I don't know if you've had, heard anything different than that.
And I agree with Eric. I know they're very close to having their model ready to go. They were very forthcoming with allowing me to share a screenshot of that dashboard that they're planning to use. They've also been very forthcoming in sharing that they will give me their data so that I can put it into our model because right now the only data that I have comes from DHS. And I know that there's differences in the data, so they've been very willing to, to share the data table so that we can import them in there. And Rhonda, I think that when they release theirs and they actually publish their dashboard, I think inviting them would certainly be appropriate. And to Eric's point, I think they'd probably be more willing to attend the meeting after they've, they've published the dashboard and they finished their work in that area.
And, and I would add, it's, when we are, it sounds like, and if I'm wrong, let me know, that we're going to use that, that data they have and compare it with what Andrew's proposal looks like. We seem to be using it without someone to really sit and disseminate it and explain it to us. So I guess if we're willing to use it to begin with, I'm wondering why we don't have someone ready to just present it. We have a lot of people come and present things to us.
Sure.
This is, this seems to be a very high priority and a very specific need. So I'm, I'm just going to throw it out there again that it would be great to have that voice in these meetings.
Rhonda, I agree with you wholeheartedly and that's why I was a little bit confused on the purpose of this meeting tonight. That last time, there seemed to be a lot of urgency to schedule a meeting. We need to do it within a week. But the people who have the answers aren't ready yet. And if we were in a place in our community where the numbers were very low, if we were close to that 5% metric and there was some urgency to reopen, then I would say, yes, there's, you know, we, we're ready to transition, let's go. And that would be our sense of urgency. But right now, we set it at 5%, it's at 30%. The people that we want to give us the answers have told us they're not ready yet. So the purpose of tonight's meeting, I agree with you, we want to hear from them, but until they're ready, they're not going to come before us.
And here's what I would say, here's what I would say to that. And I would respond with, we also discussed that it's important, and we know this because we continuously get emails from our families that they're struggling. And sometimes they're struggling because they don't have any sort of forecast, right? And then we talked about this, that there's no definite number or something that we're working towards. We're just, it's just, you know, it's just out there. Nobody's really making decisions. I think it would be safe to say on a national level, there's not a lot of leadership on this. So I would love us to be leaders in this community and decide that we are looking to have some sort of criteria that obviously we know that we can reverse it, but I think it's the uncertainty. It's the, it's the inability for, for anyone to look to Green Bay and say, this is their plan. Other than the 5%, which we can debunk all day long, but that's not reality. That's important and I'm, and again, based on the feedback that we are getting, I think it would be important to be able to point to something rather than continuously just tell them, we understand, we know that virtual learning isn't the best, the best route to go, but here we are. I think it would be great for us to establish rather than continuously waiting for the county to establish something.
I mean, we did establish something. We established a 5%.
5%, but, but again, I think if it was so fabulous, we would be there, we wouldn't have to be looking for other criteria. And we know that that's not realistic. It does have to do with testing capacity and it's not optimum. And it's been debunked millions of times. So I'm just hoping we can consider something while we still wait for the county.
Go ahead Christina.
I would say that that's exactly what we're doing, right? I mean, last week, we decided to have this meeting today so that we could ensure that there was a meeting on the record that indicates to the community that we are committed to this 100%, which we are. This has taken up everyone's time. This is all we've been talking about. So we did commit to a number. That number wasn't a great metric. We all agreed and understand that. That's a placeholder for right now. And to your point exactly Rhonda, if, if the public health department or the public health experts and we are not, then we continue the work as we are, looking at the numbers, looking at Andrew's models and ensuring though that when we do make a decision, because I think, yes, people want to know what the metrics are, but it's also really confusing if we pass something and then it changes, which is what we talked about last week, right? And so, yes, there is a lack of leadership at the top, but it's also really confusing because we've never dealt with anything like this before and everything changes very rapidly. So I think, I just want to be careful to, that we don't get into a place where we're not trying, we're not, that we're not moving in that direction because that's all we've been doing is trying to move in that direction. And I think what's exciting about this dashboard is, is at least it compiles five different metrics that we can all agree on to say in some capacity, these are going to drive our decisions.
So would it be possible then for us to, and this is where I believe people get confused. The board's deciding. There are people that literally think we're voting tonight, and I know you're probably aware of this. They're, they're believing that we're going to vote to go back to school or not. I mean, people are very busy. They have a lot going on and other kids are being schooled at home, right? So they're only sometimes taking blips of information. Would it be possible for us to then make more of a declaration of, rather than fudge around, we are waiting for the county?
Do you think that we're fudging? I mean, I thought that, I feel like we've been very clear. I mean, I get, let me finish what I'm saying.
Those aren't my words. Those are my words. I'm speaking for, for people that have reached out and that is the impression that they have, right?
Right, right.
That's what we're doing. So if we can be very clear about the fact that we are in fact waiting for the county, period.
So what do you think we could do a better job about that though? Because to your point, there's a lot of information out there. That's why we're meeting today because we said that last week. We've said that repeatedly that we have a metric that was not good enough, that we're committed to doing better, that we're waiting for our public health officials. We met last week. We said we were going to wait another week so that we can get them on board. We're talking about that now. So absolutely, just let me finish for a second. So communication is absolutely key. Yes, there's no doubt about that. But I think what we've committed to in our meetings is a really good conversation and people have also applauded that and said, you guys are really digging into this and I appreciate that you're taking the time to make thoughtful decisions. So, you know, there, there are a wide spectrum of opinions on how this is going down. But yes, everybody agrees that we need to figure this out, but we can't, there's no point in doing it to getting ahead of ourselves if we're already at a 30% positivity rate. We're not, we're not even close. I'd rather make a good decision than a hasty decision.
Well, and that's what I just conceded to when I began to speak about this just before you spoke this last time, that I think it's important that we actually do make a declaration and it very, very clear because the public may not know that the county is coming up with something, but, but it's almost, I mean, maybe it's a matter of, there's, there's a press release. There's some more grand type of announcement or declaration that we are just going to defer to the county. And we're going to wait to see what they come up with and then decipher that. Just like make it more of, just a little bit right. So that it's very clear that some people don't think we're just going to continuously do this because I do believe there is confusion. And if we are in fact going to just defer to the county, then I think we have to make that a very big statement.
Sure. I'll call on you in just a second, but I just want to clarify to your point Rhonda, to make sure this is clear. The county is not going to come out with, here's when you can open your schools, here's when you can go higher. They're not going to tell us what to do. What they're going to do is give us data that's very local, which we don't have access to right now. And we will still have the ability to take that data and decide, do we want to use four of the metrics? Do we want to use all five? Do we only want to use two? And we can set those benchmarks. So we're still in control. What the county is going to do is say, here's the information, the access to the data that, that you've never had before. And we're going to provide to you, provide it to you daily. And we then, once we see what that is, and maybe they can come in and explain those data points and we, then we can decide, okay, where do we feel we're comfortable with as a school district? So we still have local control that way, but what we'll gain and similar to what you talked about Rhonda is just some expert opinions on a very, very local level. So.
And that's, and that's exactly what I understand as well. But we are in fact still waiting for county data in order to move forward and make a decision on gating criteria. So just the fact that we are waiting and that is something, we're not having them vet a proposal anymore. Just that it's very, very clear that that is what we're waiting on. It'd be great.
And I know Andrew is an input here and if I could just share, Rhonda, one of the things that we can do is we can invite them to come in and explain the metrics. And then they've also, like I said, they've agreed to give us the data. So I can put them in an interactive spreadsheet so that as we're talking through the meeting, that, that you could select gating criteria and you would be able to look in reverse and say, well, what would the implication have been in August, in July, in June? And I think that'll help us then looking forward. So we can ask them to come in and explain the data points and then, and then we could use the, the interactive dialogue to figure out where to set those gating points.
That would be great.
Go ahead Andrew, I'm sorry.
Andrew, you're on mute.
I thought August 31st was, was too long to wait. I thought, I thought last week was, was too long to wait. I think this week is too long to wait. And I don't think it's likely that we're going to come up with something all, all that different next week. I mean, the big, the big data point is COVID cases in Brown County and positivity, those, those we have. Five, 5 to 18, we don't have. You can sort of approximate it with zero to, with zero to 19 from the state of Wisconsin. You know, you don't, I, in researching this and others researched it too, I didn't see any district, any states using the 5 to 18 case count as part of their school decision. I didn't, I didn't see it in the strict states. I didn't see it in the permissive states. I didn't see it anywhere. A couple of jurisdictions use hospitalization. I believe in, and many use some combination of positivity, yes. But positivity, there's a real problem there because the, the amount of testing is just, is just up and down. A clear cut metric of actual cases in Brown County with the caveat, which was in the motion that I made, that there would be special consideration if the positivity was really high, which I honestly didn't think we'd ever hit it, but we did. I think, I think the right balanced approach is to say 100 cases, under 100 cases for two consecutive weeks is where we would start elementary hybrid. And there's been, you know, there's been time for the county to weigh in. I think it's important to realize, as Eric said, there is, the county is not going to make a recommendation. They're just going to explain metrics and show us where, show us where those metrics might have, might have fallen. And the, the bottom line is the, the youth case count percentage tracks really closely to the overall cases, at least, at least when you look at 0 through 19. It's not likely that you would have a categorically different thing in that 5 to 18 metric than you would in, in everything else. But I think in any special circumstances, the board could always be asked to look at it. I think people need, I think people deserve to know when we would be at a point when we could reopen for, we could start, we could start returning to class in a blended model. And it's very, you know, no new recommendations are going to happen between now and however long this is put off till next time. I guess I would say, you know, there, if we're, if we're talking about the, if we're talking about the 28th at a regularly scheduled board meeting, then there might be certain, certain advantages to, to public and student input. But I certainly am not, I, I think it's, I think it's already too late. I think we should have started the year with a metric. And if we were overruled by the county or had new had new scientific data that suggested the metric was bad, that's what we should have done. I guess I would also point out, I don't know that we really, we have a reference in a current motion to five percent positivity, yes. But that, the motion has passed with five percent positivity does not, does not cause anything to happen except a discussion. Is that correct? Five percent positivity for two weeks, not that we're anywhere close to that, does not open the schools to the hybrid model. It, it, it triggers a discussion. Is that correct or wrong?
I believe that's correct, Eric.
Okay, so I think with the public and and that's part of, that's a, I mean, I didn't like the positivity metric either, but I really didn't like the fact that we were I, I don't think we should have something where we are making it look like these are the rules for returning to school. And then really it's just to trigger a next discussion and a calendaring. We should find the right rules and then use them to drive our decision. And sure, if there's emergencies, then we can make an emergency consideration. If something, God forbid, changes with the virus to cause kids to catch it faster, which we've not seen, they're catching it less. Of course, that's an emergency change. So but I guess if, I guess if I'm the only one here who doesn't want to vote on this tonight, let's just get it over with and postpone it again, but it's, it's disappointing. I think we should pass something.
Laura, I saw your hand up and then Dawn.
Um, I just wanted to add, uh, I, so I agree with Rhonda that it would be nice if our district took a leadership part in this. Um, but I feel like, um, I, I also agree with Christina in that I want to get it right the first time. Um, when we do make this decision, I would like it to have, um, you know, have some, um, I'd like it to be solid, a solid decision and not have any wavering. Um, so there's a lot of overlap in our geographical area with the districts and I'm hoping that by following uh, what the county, the county's data, that, um, that other school districts will do the same. And until that data is there and, um, you know, available fully, I am, you know, I think we should pause on that and I'm ready to take this vote.
Go ahead, Dawn.
I'm good. I think everything, I think everything's been covered.
So what are we voting to to do to postpone again till the twenty eighth?
Well, my, my question first would be, um, there's a motion that's currently on the table to use metrics that, uh, that Andrew brought forward. Are we interested in taking a vote on that tabled motion right now?
Yeah, I moved the, I moved the second reading of the, um, of the motion as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
I'm not interested in failing, so if no one's going to vote, if no one's going to vote for it, I, I guess I would move, I can move to postpone it to to the twenty eighth, but I, I will have no confidence anymore that we're ever going to get to it if it goes beyond even another week.
Can I, can I just ask a question?
Yep.
Or make a suggestion? Um, I think it's really important that when we do take votes like this, we do them in board meetings where we can actually have people phoning, phone in, call in. But they have an opportunity. Personally, I just would like to see that as part of the, part of the framework.
Sure. All right. So we have a motion on the table. We have a second. Is there any other discussion?
I'll move to postpone the motion I just made, um, one additional week into the regularly scheduled board meetings of, uh, on the twenty, on the twenty eighth.
Can we talk about what time that meeting starts?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so really testing my Robert's rules here. There was a tabled motion. That motion was then remade by Andrew, seconded by Rhonda. And then Andrew made a second motion to table the first motion. So we're voting to re-table the motion that was tabled?
But I, I, I think we had a vote on the first motion that we have to go back to the, the motion that Andrew and Rhonda first passed and then seconded and then
I remade that just now. If it didn't have to be remade, that was redundant, but I moved, I moved the second reading of that first reading that was moved to the fourteenth and then postponed till today, which I don't know if you needed to make it or not, but for simplicity, I made it.
And it got seconded.
There, yeah, there's no simplicity.
Well, sure, it was moved inside, sure, it was moved and seconded. It was not voted on last week. It was moved to this, this week. I don't know if we needed a mo- I don't know if we needed a motion to have it be active for this meeting, but I did that. So I know that, I know that it's not going to, to pass tonight, so I'm moving to postpone it to next. I postponed it again to next, to next week.
I feel like we're just throwing motions around here. Can we please vote on the motion up or down? Isn't that what we're supposed to be doing?
Melissa, can I just get some clarification here? So are we voting on to re-table or are we voting to?
Did Andrew's mo- Andrew, did your motion take your, I'm, did your motion from Rhonda that that you passed and Rhonda seconded take, took the motion off the table? So it was back into being an active motion. Is that what you did?
So I feel, I feel, yeah, I feel like there was a motion made, there was a second.
I had to make it, I don't think we had to make a motion to reactivate it. I think we decided last week to postpone it to today.
But it was still tabled, so I
Yeah.
You have to vote to take it off the table.
Correct. But an emotion was made, a motion was seconded, we need to vote on that motion.
It was postponed, it was postponed to a definite time, which is tonight.
I think the question is though, that it was, there was a motion made to remove it, uh, to pull it back on into direct action and seconded. So that makes it a live motion right now.
Well, they didn't vote on that fir- on that first motion though, Steve.
Right.
Andrew made the motion, Rhonda seconded it, and then we have to vote to make it live. And then Andrew can then make his motion to post, to table it again to the twenty eighth when it's back on the table. But first we got to clear the motion of the tabling from the twenty first.
Yeah, I, I don't think so because I think I moved to postpone it to a definite time, which is today. I don't think a further vote is required to reactivate it for today. I think the motion last week, which passed, which was to move it to today, I think that's a live motion. I kind of regret remaking it because I don't think I had to. I thought that was easier for people.
But we, we tabled the motion the, the last time. So I, you, you
Did we table or did we post? No, we postponed it to a special board meeting on September twenty first, which is postponing to a definite time.
I think we tabled it.
Did we, did we, then what, how did we know that we were meeting tonight? There, there's no way I would have voted yes.
Put it on the agenda.
Right, there's no way I would have voted yes if it was, if it was postponed any later than this meeting. So this meeting was created to deal with that motion.
So let, let me, let me see if thi- this helps because you, you said you wanted to delay it. Uh, in, I, I would plan to vote no on the original motion that's on the table. And the reason that I would do that is because we are going to get different data, different information that is local, which is different than what the motion on the table refers to. It, it's what we asked for. We, we asked for some opinion. We know we're getting something that's better. And so I would prefer to vote on this tonight so that we can provide some clarification, which this conversation is not doing to anybody who's watching. And by getting this motion off the table and committing to using the Brown County local data would provide clarity to our entire community, which is what we're working through. And so the motion was made, the motion was seconded, and I don't know what order we need to do on. Melissa, please weigh in if you have that information. But let's vote on this motion that was made. And if it does not pass, then it is off the table and provides clarification to our community that we're moving in the direction of local Brown County data.
What's different between the local Brown County data and the state data for Brown County?
I think that's what Rhonda was asking for clarification on.
Yeah.
I'd like to focus on this motion.
Okay, so I, my understanding is the motion was put, the motion that Andrew made back um, for the fourteenth, so for last week, was put on the table and was tabled. Now we need to take it off the table. So Rhonda, Andrew made the motion, Rhonda seconded it. We need to vote on that motion to take it off the table. And then Andrew can make his motion to table it again till the twenty eighth, but we, we have to clear the table first.
All right. So the, the vote that we will take right now is to whether or not you want to pass the first motion that you see in Agenda Manager that is
Not about passing the motion, Eric. It's taking it off the table so that you can then the actual
I see.
So we're not voting
If you vote, if you vote, if you vote yes, you're taking it off the table?
Correct, so that you can then vote on it.
I see.
So you, you're taking it off the table. Otherwise it remains table.
Okay.
So was it your interpretation that I did not make a motion to postpone it to a definite time?
I, I I don't have the
It's a second reading on September fourteenth.
Beth, Beth, can you read back the, the motion?
Absolutely. That the Board of Education approves the following instructional model gating criteria for grades pre-K through fifth grade for transition between the various instructional models as set forth below, subject to a second reading on September fourteenth for final confirmation and subject to reapproval by the Board on November ninth.
But what did we, what, what was the motion last week? When we postponed it again? I thought it was to postpone it until September twenty first.
You have the motion, Beth, from September fourteenth for the postpone when we're tabling?
Yeah.
Andrew, would you be able to just speak to what the difference is that you were thinking about? I just feel like, just to be very clear about why that matters.
Yeah, I think it, I think it matters because there was, there was a reason, there was a reason that I moved it in, in such a way that it couldn't hang out there indefinitely, which is why you make a motion to postpone until a certain time. And I would prefer to, I mean, I think, um, I think it's a, I think it's a reasonable metric. I think that, um, I just think we don't need to completely reinvent the wheel next time. Perhaps we'll find, perhaps board members will decide to add some positivity component to it. But it, it seems like a waste of everything that's been done so far to completely scrap it when the county, if, if the county were going to have suggestions that might be different, but we know they're not.
So I guess that's what I'd like to hear, hear why that, why this matters then. If they're not going to come out with criteria and they're just giving us data points, why? And I'm asking this honestly, why we would not move forward with the metric? If we know
I think they
they come out and give us any sort of criteria, gating criteria to move from offsite to blended, why wouldn't at least put a stick in the ground to start with and then incorporate more of their information if we want to later? When and if they come out with it?
Okay, he did interrupt. Beth does have the motion. Can we let Beth, Beth read the motion? It was voted on and then I think we can clear this up and move on to, to, um, further discussion as to the parents. Let's, let's clear this up first. Go ahead, Beth.
Uh, so the attached motion, which was the one that I just read, was tabled until a special board meeting that will be held on September twenty first, twenty twenty.
And that was voted on, Beth?
Correct.
And what was the vote?
I apologize. Let me just grab it.
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure it passed.
It did pass. Um, I, my notes a little unclear if it was seven to zero or six to one.
Okay. Sorry to put you on the spot. I know you probably have more clear somewhere else. All right, it passed. So the motion is on the table. We need to clear the motion off the table. There was a first, a second. Um, can we have Beth take roll call on that particular motion to get it up?
So it's, but is, is that even relevant anymore? Or was it already on the table and what I moved was irrelevant?
I understood you moved it off the table. You, you made a motion to move it off the table, which is what
Yeah, but I don't think that needs to happen anymore because I ta- I moved to table it until the twenty first and it passed. So I think it was already on the table. So now I think we're just, I think that is, there's no point in moving to take it off the table. I think it was, it was already off the table. And so I think I just am moving to postpone that motion until the twenty eighth. Or postpone to the twenty eighth. Table to the twenty eighth isn't the correct wording. Well, you know what? Look up what postpone to a definite time means because that's what I did. I don't, do whatever you want. Let's get it over with.
So are you withdrawing the first and the second then from moving it off?
I don't think the first, I don't, um, if I withdraw the motions, then what is the status of that? Because it was, the motion said that it would be postponed until today. So does the motion to postpone until today not count unless it's removed?
And what Beth has is that he, is that the motion was to table until September twenty first. So my understanding was your first and the second was to take it off the table. And so that there needs to be a vote on taking it off the table and then we're back to the original motion, Andrew, um, from September fourteen.
I think it was already off the table when this meeting started, but because that's what postponing to a definite time is, but maybe I worded it wrong or something.
Eric, I'm going to differ back to you as to what you want to do next. That's procedurally where we are.
Procedurally, I'm in charge. Okay. So again, I would like to, I, I felt, it was my opinion that Andrew's made this suggestion on the thirty first. We waited until the fourteenth, we pushed it back to the twenty first, and the reason that we did that was because we were waiting for feedback from Brown County Health. We were waiting to see if they had a, a response to that or if they had anything different. Here we are on the twenty first and we've gotten something from Brown County Public Health to suggest that they're going to come out with, with a set of metrics, they're going to come out with better information. We can still have a conversation around gating criteria, but we can use it, uh, use the best data that's available to us. And we can decide if we want five metrics or four metrics or three, and we will have somebody from county health here in front of us that, that can, can hopefully, uh, at least inform us a little bit better, which is what we wanted all tho- all along. We passed a number i- in August that was, is a placeholder. We all agree that, uh, that it's not exactly where, where we want it to be, but it was the best we had at the time. If we know that something better is coming down the line, then I think that we should wait for it, which is the why that I would like to take a vote on this original motion that Andrew made and why I would on this original motion that Andrew made and why I would plan to not support it in favor of Brown County Public Health's information in continuing the conversation.
Can Andrew clarify that would we be going back to school today with your proposal?
Not even close.
Right.
Not even close. It would be-
Well, just so that people are aware of that.
I'm glad you mentioned that. I also, you know, people, some people reached out to me confused that they got their cohort letters thinking that it means when they're coming back to school. Now, I explained that there's a good reason we would want to tell people about the cohort group early in case there was a good reason that you might need to be in a different one. There's plenty of time, so I said that that, you know, that was important to get that out there. But yes, the past, the past week for the, I do have it up to today. 100 would have been required, and if the week ended today, it would have been 413.2, which is terrible and much higher than the May 6th previous peak. So no, we're not, we're not, we're not close to going back. I've, I've altered my business life completely. I was allowed to go into the office. I don't anymore. Hardly, hardly at all. If I do, you know, it's, it's a, not a good, I think, thank God that fatalities and serious illnesses seem to have come down a bit, but the case count is ridiculous. I have close family that has it. Yeah, so no, we're not close, we're not close to coming back, and it would be very, I would, that is, by the way, part of why I think two weeks in a row is important because one, one great week shouldn't be enough. Like if one, say, it just completely plummeted, I wouldn't, we should have two weeks in a row. You know, I just, I think, yes, I think that my first motion was irrelevant. So I'll withdraw all my motions, and then I believe that my motion is the thing that would be up for a vote. Because it was postponed specifically to now.
Okay. So there's a motion on the table. And if I follow this correctly, the first motion that you see in Agenda Manager, the one that Beth had read earlier, to approve the following instructional model for gating criteria, and this is what Andrew had presented on August 31st. So if you would like us to utilize this model for our gating criteria, you will vote yes. And Andrew made the motion and Rhonda seconded it. Christina, do you have something to add?
Sorry, just to clarify, in the metrics that Brown County Health are putting forward on their dashboard, the metric that Andrew is using in his, in his exam, in the motion that currently exists, that metric will be embedded into the dashboard. So that's one of five that the county will have, right? So we, if this, by voting no, right, on this, we still can use the metric. It still exists. It's, we're just basically saying there's other metrics that we want to pull in because we have more data, correct? And once we determine which data metrics, because we have access to more data, we would then determine what those numbers are. So in fact, we could go back and use Andrew's work that he has to guide us on the numbers for that specific metric.
Correct.
There's actually really only four metrics because one of them is count, one of them is case counts, and one of them is case counts over a week, so.
But I'm just, I'm just saying though, that a vote no on this isn't a vote against the work that you've done. To me, it's a vote saying, thanks for the work, and I want, I'm interested in pulling in more data to make that decision.
I appreciate your, your explanation of your perspective. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Beth, why don't we take a vote here?
Can you reiterate what an I and a no is, please?
If you vote yes, you're voting for the district to utilize the first motion that was first presented by Mr. Becker on August 31st. If you are voting no, that means that we need to have a discussion around a different model. All right, Beth, go ahead.
Okay. Smith?
No.
Sitnikow?
Yes.
Shelton?
No.
Warren?
No.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
No.
Vanden Hoen?
No. All right, motion failed five to two. Steve, I'm going to throw this back to you because we're having so much fun. If you could help us with, from your perspective, what you see as our options and what you need from the board going forward.
So I would propose, based on Rhonda's initial comments at the start of the meeting, that we know that Brown County is working very hard to develop a dashboard that will be available to the public and be very relevant to Brown County specifically. I think Rhonda made a request, which I would support, to ask if we could get a representative from the Department of Public Health to come to the next board meeting and explain the metrics that are in the dashboard. I think I shared with you that they are going to share their data with me. That will allow me to put it into the framework. After they go through the explanation and board members are comfortable that they understand those metrics, then the board could elect to choose one, two, three, four, or five of those metrics to use in our model. We could then push the various thresholds through each of those models that would allow the board to decide on the gating criteria in each of the columns that they choose. Then after the board does that and passes that, then that would be kicked over to the administrative team. We would operationalize that. Lori's already been looking at dashboards from some other districts that we could create that would feed right off that Brown County model, and then we would make that available to the general public.
So Steve, I just also want to clarify that if we end up utilizing that data, that's something that the districts could promote and make easily accessible to people on our own page. Is that correct?
It is, and I believe that the county will be doing the same on their page.
Okay. Andrew and then Christina.
So is this a for sure for the 20th and for being on an agenda for the 20th in a way that it can be voted on? And that it can have, do they change some things around, that we can have public input, that we can have the student rep, and that that can happen before, before the vote? And is this a for sure for the 20th, or is this just, or is this just going to delay every time that a third-party mayor may not be ready?
So at this point in time, I don't know what their timeline is to release it. So the best I can tell you, Andrew, is that I certainly, I can make that request to them to come to the meeting. The other thing is obviously they are not employees of the district. We can't compel them to come to the meeting. It's only a request on our part. So I provided that their, their dashboard is ready to go and that the request is made. I would hope that they would grant us that courtesy and that they would come to the meeting.
And the 20th is a regular work session, so we would have public comment and participation as normal procedure.
Unless we, unless we-
Sorry.
But now is there, would we then not be able to vote on it? And, you know, we have a practice of, we have a practice that at work sessions, we don't vote on things, but this is also kind of new territory that the order has shifted on these. So I guess I would want to know that it's also possible to vote on it on the 20th, and I'd like to know how to, like, confirm that that will be a, an agenda item on the 20th, that there would at least be a choice to make a motion and force a vote, even if, even if the county isn't there.
You could certainly do that.
I hope they'll be there too. However, oh, go ahead, Troy.
As I say, if you simply schedule a special meeting to occur immediately after the end of the work session, that gives you the opportunity to discuss it, to hear a presentation from the county, to hear from people, and then you can vote afterwards if that's what you choose.
I, my only hesitation there is I don't understand the rush. If we, we would just find ourselves in the same situation. We're waiting for them. They're making progress. If they said, you know, we can't make it to the meeting on the 28th, but we can make it on the 7th, then let's do it on the 7th instead of putting up these artificial timelines. Again, if the virus spread in our community was at a low level and we were close, I would understand the urgency. But we are nowhere near any kind of transition based upon any metrics that we've looked at regardless of the model, so I just, I'm hesitant to continue to put these forward and make promises and then, you know, just keep stringing along unless, until we just say we're waiting indefinitely until the county, you know, we can have some conversations with them. Go ahead, Dawn.
So I just want to confirm, our 5% metric that we voted on on August 3rd is still in place. So let's, let's, you know, something wonderful happens, and then by next week, we look really great. In three weeks, we look like we are going to be within that 5%. That is a discussion we have, and that puts some sense of urgency around really nailing down what those metrics should be. Correct? But I mean, until, I mean, I agree with you totally, Eric. I mean, that 5% metric hasn't gone away. That's the metric we had talked about to bring us back together to really look at how we would move forward.
There's no rule attached to 5%. 5% doesn't cause anything to happen. 5% doesn't make anything happen.
Sorry, Dawn, you got interrupted there. Were you finished?
Yeah, I guess that 5%, we're nowhere near the 5%. We could pass something saying if we hit 5%, we're going to go back to blend. We're not going to be anywhere near the 5% anytime soon. I think we have the time to do this correctly. I, I would love to see Brown County Health come to our meeting and walk us through what the dashboard looks like. I'm not optimistic that they would, that they're going to show up for one of our meetings and do that.
So how long do we wait? How long is okay to make the public wait if the county doesn't wish to or is unable to or is too busy fighting COVID or whatever to come?
There's a difference, there's a difference between the county coming and presenting to the board and the county publishing their dashboard. They're not the same thing, right? I mean, if the county comes and if the county publishes their dashboard and that's there, we have that local information and we have to muscle our way through it. It would be very nice if they would come and present the dashboard to us, but I agree with Steve. They're not district employees. We can't make the county come to our meeting. We just, we can't do it. But they are, they are putting together this dashboard, and once they release that dashboard, then I think we have an obligation to figure out what that means for us and how we use that data to safely bring our kids back to school.
Christina, did you have your hand raised? I'm sorry. No, you're good. Okay. So at this point, unless someone wants to make an alternate motion, Steve, you can get in touch with Brown County Public Health, see if they'd be willing to come to a meeting and explain their, their metric and their dashboard. And we'll try to get that to happen as soon as possible.
If they're, if, whether they're coming or not, if the dashboard exists, we're gonna take this, we're gonna add this on the 20th as a special if the dashboard is available. And if the dashboard isn't available, then we can discuss that on the 20th and see if something's changed.
Yep, I think that sounds right.
Is that, do I have to make a motion, or is that for sure that it's a minimum a discussion item and maybe an action item?
Yep, just like anything else, this will be on our agenda for the foreseeable future. And I think you just stated it perfectly. It'll definitely be an agenda item, and it could potentially be an action item.
Okay, I'm just nervous about consensus stuff and whether it counts, but okay, I mean, I mean, it's on video and everyone's clear, so all right.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
So in your words, what happened tonight and what did we ultimately decide to do? Just like in, can you just paraphrase that? People want to know.
Yep.
They will.
Yep, so I think that we, we found, we got some information from Brown County Public Health, which is what we had asked for. We have an idea of what, what data points they're going to be able to provide, local data points on a daily basis. And I think, you know, we didn't take any action other than the fact that we took one model off the board. And we're to a point where we're going to get some information from local public health officials on other data points and information that will help to guide our decision-making.
And can you clarify if that information that was given to us in an email was, is that for public consumption yet? When we talk about we received information from Brown County Public Health, is that information that you speak to for public consumption if we, if we need to point to it as the information that had us take a vote to remove the proposal?
Yeah, so you're looking at like the screenshot from their dashboard and, and those five metric categories. I believe so, yes.
We're allowed to share that, even though it's in draft form? Right.
It's in draft form, right. And it's not, that's not a live screen. It's just a screenshot of their mock-up of it.
Yeah, but I think at the, the benefit of this is that when it does become live, it'll be available for public consumption. We can create our own page on our website. We can make it as easily accessible so people can look at it on a daily basis and again, look at information that's only relevant to Brown County, information that gets updated daily and easily accessible for the general public, so.
Is this screenshot that was given to us that influenced the vote on their website currently?
I don't believe they have their website up yet.
It's just a draft. So that would mean that we cannot share that. If people ask what influenced the vote or to pull the proposal off, is it your understanding that we cannot share that because it doesn't exist on their website?
I, I think what influenced the vote is information from Brown County Public Health that they're coming out with a dashboard.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Christina.
And I just want to remind everyone that the no vote tonight, to continue this discussion, has nothing to do with Andrew's work not being good enough. That is just a piece of the work moving forward, and we can still use the work that you did, Andrew, which was great, to influence the metrics and the gating for that specific data point. So I feel good about that, and I am glad, feel good about where we're headed.
All right, nothing else on the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Beth?
Ector?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Vanden Hoen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
All right, past 7:0. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.